All right, well, good evening and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, August 22nd, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Pollocka?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. Councilman Martin called just a little while ago and he is under the weather this evening, so without objection, we'll make that an excused absence since he notified us. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I support.
Supported by Pollocka and supported by Piana. Any discussion on the agenda? All right. Barb, would you call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now, we have a number of presentations this evening. Our first one is the Beautification Awards, and I see members of the Beautification Committee here this evening. Robin?
Good afternoon. Robin Yelvertan, 414 Lester and the Beautification Commission. Let's see if I can remember where to, how to click this. Oh, hit her. Yeah. There we go, wrong one. I got it.
There we are. All right.
All right, the first house that we have is from the northwest quadrant. This is 679 Livingston, and that lovely little bungalow was built back in 1928. And is Andy Kubaki here? Does anyone know Andy? She's, I'm assuming she, since it's spelled with an I, is the owner, and we just thought it was a beautiful quaint inviting home. The blue siding up on the rooftop, gable end, you really can't tell it's blue much, but it's a beautiful touch of color for the house. And then we love the planting of hydrangeas and the various shrubs. A lot of square lines, so to sort of counterbalance that, we've got a nicely curving sidewalk there, so we thought that was quite, quite nice.
Very nice.
The next house is 315 College Street. This bungalow was built back in 1949, and I believe its current owner is with us, Eric Summers. Hey, Eric, come on up.
Come on up.
We thought, the beds on the home are very well manicured. The color of the maple tree that is on the left corner of the front of the house almost matches the shutters perfectly. There's some, I think he may have taken a leaf in and had him analyze the color. A great little collection, but he tells us that the really pretty part of the house is in the backyard, but since we, as the Beautification Commission, are only allowed to photograph in view from the street, since we don't want to be on private property, we still gave it an award. So, anything you want to share with us, Eric?
Just thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The pressure is on when you said how well it manicured it is. The pressure is on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. The next house, this is in the northeast quadrant. It's 1455 Orchard. And this house, you know, in Ferndale, we've got quite a collection of different styles of homes. You've got really nice, affluent looking, you've got more modest, and we have to share the love with everyone. And in this case, we have a home that was built just recently compared to a lot of the houses in Ferndale in 1972. Simple, square, little ranch style. The young lady that owns it is with us tonight, Nancy Hoffman. Would you like to stand up and say, "Hey"? When she bought this, it did not have the pergola on the front of it. It was a simple little white box with black shutters, and so we think she's done a lovely job so far. She's added color through the use of the shutters and matching furniture out front. She's working on those beds, the one on the left side, you can't tell it in the photo, but actually looks very nice. And the front yard there is still an ongoing project, and so we just thought it was a great little eclectic garden. And just found out, while I was talking with her this evening, Nancy's a flight attendant, so she travels a lot. So, the rock garden that you see is made of rocks that she's collected from all over the world in her various travels. So, I'm sure there's a lot of stories there that she could share with us if we were to go view the yard. Anything you'd like to add?
Can you get the rocks in your luggage?
I'm just bringing a little.
And they're not fluid, so you don't have to do that whole bottle thing.
I can take fluid through, but I just came back from Peru.
Come up to the microphone, so we can all hear you.
I just came home from Peru and I brought some rocks back from Peru, so I'll add those to my collection.
How long have you lived there?
Since 1999.
Oh, nice. Very nice.
Excellent. Let's get a photo with you, Nancy.
Congratulations.
Thanks, honey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very nice.
All right, and the next house is, unfortunately, the photo truly does not do its justice. This is 726 Flowerdale. It's in the southwestern quadrant. Is Lori Herb here?
There she is. I know that house.
Make your way forward. This yard is really, for someone like myself who loves horticulture and plants, it's quite a lovely garden. And I didn't even realize how much work she had done on this. This house was built in 1946. It's in the Dales, of course, and a great little bungalow. And when I was, I like to sort of search to see what else I can find about the houses that win. And I found a photo of the house, I believe when you bought it, that shows nothing but two trees, one on either side of the house, sort of framing the house, and the yard was empty. And so, she bought it, correct me if I'm wrong, in 2011?
December 10.
There you go. So, in the last five years, she's removed trees and totally re-garden landscaped the entire front of the house. I can't vouch for the backyard.
That's true.
So, that is a great, lovely job. She's got quite a collection of plants and flowers there, and I think you need to keep up the work, Lori. It's awesome. Awesome, awesome.
Do you want to share any secrets or tips, or?
Actually, I brought my mom up here with me because she's done-
Come up to the microphone, just so we can, we can all hear you.
My mom has done at least as much work as I have.
And what's mom's name?
Mom's name is Juanita.
Hello, Juanita.
And I come up with some crazy idea, wouldn't it be neat if maybe we could, and I wake up the next morning and mom's out in the yard going, "Well, you said you thought you might, so I thought I'd start on the-"
So, she's like your little garden gnome.
Yeah, and so there you go. And I know you can't see it in the photo, but sort of in the bottom right, there's this little evergreen bush that was, besides those gigantic pine trees-
The only thing that was there.
-the only landscaping, and that was right up against the house. I just couldn't bear to get rid of it, because I thought, well, this is all there was, I should, so I made it a little altar out in the front.
Well, you did a lovely job with mom's house.
Thank you.
Really nice.
I hope you can come by and see it when it's in bloom.
I want to, yeah, yeah, yeah. It'd be awesome.
Yeah, come on, mom.
Yeah, of course. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
All right, now we have another award, and I really didn't know who to make this out to, so it's a bit of a collection.
Oh.
It's the Smart Bus Stop on the corner of 9 Mile and just off of Woodward. And the reason we put this in here is because I got a phone call last week from Cindy Wilcock, somewhat frantic, but, you know, she was wondering if we could be involved. Well, of course, we'd love to be involved, but we can't move that fast, because they wanted it done, she called me on Tuesday, they wanted it done on Friday for Dream Cruise. And so, they went ahead and got this wonderful little bus stop all fixed up. For those of you who don't know the story, it was started with some comments by Chris Best, who owns the Rust Belt, and then carried out, I think, through, the word got back to the people at Smart. And one of our fellow citizens here in Ferndale, Dustin Bowerman Hagfors, works for Smart, and so they got it all approved and cleared. And so, this is one of, I believe, a total of five in the city. They're removing all the advertisement from the bus stops because they're no longer going to be advertising on the stops. And so, the idea was to put the art in Smart, for the Smart Bus Stops. So, it's going to have artwork in it, and then the rooftop of it is actually a planted green roof, which is where Chris sort of came into it, because I understand he has a little bit of experience with that. So, you see Dustin there painting, and Dustin actually came to our Beautification Commission meeting this past, when was it, Thursday? And so, we will be working with him on future projects. We just weren't able to jump through the hoops quick on this one, but we thought it deserved an award too, as our commercial award for the month. So, I don't know if anybody's here from the DDA that could-
Barry Hicks is, and I bet he would know how to-
There you go. Awesome.
Yeah, and they also really helped oversee and pull it all together, so I think he'd be an appropriate person.
Of course, a lot of the credit goes to volunteers.
Correct. So, I am imagining that we'll probably get a lot of sedum and succulents and that sort of stuff donated next year. We've already started a stockpile of our own for the Beautification Commission, but I understand they're not going to be all identical, so we'll see how all of that works out. But we thought it was a great step in Ferndale in beautification. The next month, we'll be doing block awards, so anyone who wants to nominate a block of the city, it's not just a single home. Those nominations are accepted at the DPW Yard and also online on our Facebook page, Ferndale Beautification. And then finally, the next nominations coming up in October are the Beautification Awards that we do every year for Halloween decor, and then, of course, the holiday lights in December. So, there you are.
Excellent. Robin, thank you and your group for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
It's always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next presentation is the Ferndale Public Schools. I'm not sure I see anyone here from the public schools, however, so maybe they didn't, weren't able to make it this evening. So, we'll move on, and if they come, they will put them on the agenda. So, then the next presentation would be the Downtown Development Authority. Barry Hicks, bring you back up to tell us all the latest and greatest in downtown Ferndale.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. One second, I'm just going to grab a presentation. And kind of to build a little bit on what Robin was just talking about there, there we go. Yes, we did just recently complete the bus stop there on West 9 Mile, right next to the Rust Belt. I do believe, if I remember correctly, the early conversations with Chris Best, the owner of the Rust Belt there, was, "I'm so glad I didn't have to go out and do this in the middle of the night, and that you guys actually helped me coordinate this and get it done legally." So, we're very glad that happened that way, too. But a lot of the credit, I just want to thank our volunteers, and I believe Dustin Bowerman Hagfors was already mentioned, and Ken Bowerman Hagfors, too, Chris Best, Francine Hatcham, Derek Prattley, Madonna Van Fossen, Rick Axe, Summer and Joe Really, Ryan Williams for doing the graphic design on there. And then plant materials also came from Summer and Joe Really, Helene Zach, Jeannie Davis, Michael Ross at Modern Tree and Landscape, and Jim Poole at Renaissance Vineyard Church. So, also, big thanks to the Ferndale DDA for helping get the site ready, or the DDA and the DPW for getting the site ready, and then also to Smart for letting us do this. And I definitely also want to thank Cindy Wilcock for working very hard to get this thing turned around in about two and a half weeks in time for Dream Cruise, and coordinating all these meetings with Smart and with all our volunteers and everything. It was very challenging, and she did a great job with that. And that's what the bus stop looked like before, if anybody remembers. There was a lovely advertisement on the side, the contents aren't important. And then there's, you know, I just wanted to give credit to some of our volunteers here as they were going through getting landscaping and putting some of the paint on there, it looks like, as well as, I believe that's Chris, putting some of the green roof on there. Another shot of the green roof with Dustin there, he's painting, and the finished product. So, thanks to all our volunteers and everybody coming together to make that happen. It was a very successful project, and we hope to transform some of the other bus stops in Ferndale. Also, it's probably worth noting, after talking to some of the people at Smart, we were the first community to approach them to do something like this.
Of course we were.
So, of course we were, yes.
Of course we were.
But they were, they were very helpful and very happy to see us go forward with this, and they've been very supportive the entire way. So, thanks to everybody that wasn't involved with that. Also, the Get Real movie series, we just did Disney's Cars for the Dream Cruise last week, and on September 15th, the third Thursday in September, we have The Princess Bride coming up. And I want to thank some of our sponsors here, that would be Embrew, Ferndale Collision, Painting with a Twist, Jim Schaper and Associates Realtors, and The Candlewick Shop for sponsoring those. And then the third Thursdays continuing in October, when we do FIDO, does Ferndale on October 20th. So, more details to come on that. And that is what I have for you. Thanks.
Excellent. Thanks, Barry. All right. Our next presentation is the Ferndale Area District Library. Is there someone from the library here? Again, I'm not sure I see anyone, so we'll skip past that, and if they show up, we'll give them an opportunity to speak to us. Presentation by the Ferndale Housing Commission. But she was at the last meeting, so maybe, maybe that's what that was about. Before we get to the last one, which is a presentation about the measures that the city's taking around rodent control, I did notice that our county commissioner is here. And rather than make you follow rats-
For rodents. Thank you.
Rodents. We'll give you an opportunity, if you'd like to take a few minutes, to share what's going on at Oakland County.
I'm glad I'm not a rat this evening, so I'm trying to be on your team. So, I do want to let you know that I went to the Oakland County Arts Authority meeting last week. We have a village for the Detroit Institute of Arts that creates an Oakland Art Authority that collects the village for Oakland County and represents us in spending that village. And we did an amendment. People were upset, maybe about a year or two ago, when there was a salary increase for the former director right after the bankruptcy. And people were very upset, and we did an amendment, and we said to them, "You really have to be transparent in how you operate now with our public dollars." And it's been a cultural transition for the DIA. But the good news is, they heard us loud and clear. In part of the village, we did quantify that ex mod money needs to be spent in Oakland County. So, we do have senior trips, buses, we have school trips where the DIA village pays for them. We've trained 1,500 teachers on art education, and they are exceeding all of the different areas. There's program, the Inside Out, I know that we have the art reproductions here, really to bring art into the community. And the new director, Salvatore, this is a mission of his, and he'll go speak anywhere he's invited. So, if there are different venues, I encourage you, you know, to invite him. He's really lovely. And they also did talk about the fact that they've reorganized their administration structure, and they did decide to give more responsibility to their chief financial officer, and they are doing a big salary raise for that person. But also, by the reorganization, they're saving $200,000 in, you know, in their expenses. So, they clearly, you know, where they've reassigned some duties, it's okay to raise the salary, and they were very open and transparent this time around. So, I was pleased with what I heard. I just want to assure people that we are, one of my learning opportunities is that I need to look at all of these different authorities clearly and closely on behalf of all of us, to make sure that they're using our public dollars wisely. We are going to have another village present, put before us on the Regional Transit Authority. I came from the Citizens Advisory Council meeting of the RTA before I came here, and I was informed that they are negotiating some different service contracts presently with DDOT and Smart. We are increasing service in cooperation between those organizations before we even vote on RTA. They're increasing service on weekends. There's going to be 20 hours of service now daily, rather than, you know, cutting out nighttime. So, I was really pleased to hear about that. I also heard a presentation at this last meeting on voting, encouraging people to register to vote, and if you are over 60 or you have a reason, please get your absentee ballot early. And if you need any type of accommodation to get to polls or do it, all you have to do is ask, there's a bunch of different volunteers that will help you, assist you, so that you can exercise your right to vote. And I feel strongly about people coming out to vote for all different issues. We also are in budget hearings, Oakland County, you know, we have a balanced budget, but we're in the process of, you know, doing a couple amendments, and we will vote on that budget in September. So, any questions?
No questions. But thanks again for being at the ribbon-cutting of the Dream Cruise, like you always are. It's great to see you there. Appreciate it. All right, now we'll move on to the final presentation, which is the Rodent Control Measures. And who's going to lead that presentation?
You know what? I get the joy.
You get the-
I do.
You get the joy. That's why you make the big bucks, Sarah, from-
20 years in government, and I'm, my pinnacle is this. Hang on, we're queuing it up really quick, and I'll-
But let me, let me tee it up, because in all seriousness, we know that we have rodents in this town, like we have rodents in all the, all the cities around here. And I don't know that it's always clear, the steps that the city has taken to address this, we haven't always communicated it, but we do have a plan in place to address this. And so, this is a beginning of our attempt to make residents aware of some of the things that we're currently doing and will be doing to address the rodents in Ferndale.
First thing is, we prefer to call them rodents. It sounds cuter than rats, but we know it is what it is. So, I want to talk a little bit about, not only some of the measures that the city has done, but also what a unique situation, what a unique problem that this is. Not unique to us, but a unique problem in general, and it's definitely in urban areas much more, much more prevalent than in maybe in more of the suburb areas. And it just is part of the nature, but it doesn't have to be something that we have to ignore and to say it is what it is. There's things and measures that we can take. They'll never go away, but we want to try to decrease the amount. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about what that looks like. I think that it's important to note that this is one of the most unique enforcement issues or issues within a community, because it's one of the very few that it's actually a huge partnership. The city can't do it alone, and it's really, in fact, we have kind of a six-point system almost altogether. But in general, though, this is actually one of the least amount of things that we, as a city workers, can actually help address. This is a huge prevention issue and a habit issue among residents, and we're going to talk a little bit about that. But we will talk about some of the controls that we can put in place. So, again, that I kind of mentioned before, this is not a unique situation to Ferndale. It is definitely along Woodward in Michigan is a huge issue. A lot of the communities, I think Royal Oak just launched a campaign last year on rat control, rodent control as well. So, it's not unique, but again, it's not about whether or not everybody else is having the same problem, it's about how is Ferndale trying to address that. And again, we're going to go over all of those key factors as we go through here. As I mentioned before, there is not one single solution that addresses the rodent population. It actually is a huge partnership, and it has many, many factors, again, which makes it very complex. So, we'll be talking about that as we move forward. So, I want to talk a little bit about what we've done to clean up our own house. One of the things that we really try to focus on is what do we need to do within our own, what the city controls, what are we doing to control our, and participate in our part? Some of the key things that we have done over the last few years is really addressing our own trash compacters and receptacles. The DPW department has really cracked down on the trash compacters and making sure that businesses are following the rules and putting the trash inside. Again, we're not perfect, but the control measures that we put in place are much better than they used to be a few years ago. We try to keep them as clean as possible and really push making sure that garbage goes inside the trash compactor and not on the outside. The other thing that we have done is addressed all of our, our own garbage cans and trying to find measures that we put in place to address the rats getting into just the, the public, the public garbage cans. And I know, again, the DPW team has really worked really hard to come up with a way to try to prevent them from getting in there, and I think we found a decent solution to try to keep the rats away from food. And when we talk about what prevention is, there's a lot of things that we'll talk about of what actually leads, what, what there is to make a good home for a rodent and what we want to avoid, and one of them is definitely that food source. The other thing that DPW has really been focusing on is along 8 Mile. We actually were able to take over 8 Mile contract with the state, which has really helped us be able to be more proactive, and again, trying to prevent any more of the rodents from coming in our communities, again, about prevention. So, we've focused on changing some of the landscaping, again, the garbage, all of that. Again, we have some challenges there. We have a lot of the homeless that live there, and a lot of food is dropped off to them, and a lot of times that's left in the garbage. So, it's not a perfect process, but we are, our DPW has been really, really persistent in making sure that that area remains clean and addressing any of the contributors to the rat population to try to avoid them coming even further into Ferndale. We've actually been meeting regularly as a team, started to address what is going on, what are patterns, and that kind of thing. So, we meet actually as a city team with code enforcement, DPW, our communications department, the city manager's office. And it might seem a little weird that the city manager is actually giving this presentation, but we wanted to make sure that people understood that the city is taking this very seriously and that we actually have, working as a team to address the many factors that are contributing to this issue. And we've actually just recently, God bless him, our recent inspector that we hired has wanted to become an expert and has really been pushing his knowledge and doing a lot of research to become what we consider an expert and a specialist on our team to really be able to keep looking at best practices and take a look at what that rodent population is looking, is what's happening and how we can prevent it and lower that number. So, we're really pleased that they've taken on that, that role as well, which needed to be done. So, now that we know what the city has been doing, it's, it's more some of the changes that we're making, but what role that we all play is that partnership. And I can't reiterate enough of how important that this particular issue is a partnership. It's unlike any other issue that usually, you know, you call up City Hall and, "We need you to take care of this," and, and that kind of thing. This is one that actually becomes a very personal endeavor for our residents, and is really important to understand about that partnership. So, let's talk a little bit more about what roles that we all play, and again, this will talk a little bit more about what the city is doing, too. Code enforcement is, is really important to talk about. I would say in the past, we've been a little more loving with our code enforcement, and now we kind of equate it to our, our residents are turning into teenagers and might be a little more firm, if you will. And so, we started taking a look at what tools as it relates to code enforcement, do we need to really put in operation as it relates to helping the prevention of the rodent population from getting larger and actually doing, making a reduction. And so, what we have really done is taken a look at what is causing the, there's a difference in resident, the residential areas and possibly, you know, where all the restaurants are and things of that nature. So, as you go through here, as we go through this, our common theme will be that not every neighborhood is going to have the same rodent issue, and there will be different contributors, but overall, it's all kind of the same, the same, the same issues that are happening. So, we are looking at strengthening our code enforcement in both the residential and business districts, which means that we're going to be a little more, we are going to be a lot more firm than we have been, and really helping people understand why it's so important that they address some of these issues. Steph is going to be actually bringing to council in the next, a couple of meetings, we've been looking- looking at what are some of our ordinances that could be inhibiting us from being a little firmer in our code enforcement. And one of the things that is, again, a huge, you'll hear, common theme, food source is a huge problem for rodent control. One of the things that we found was that our ordinance, it was conflicting a little bit and didn't quite support having requiring garbage cans with lids. And that's gonna be one of the things that we're gonna be taking a look at, is ensuring that we don't have loose garbage in particular in any of our neighborhoods and in our business districts. So, we're gonna have to take a look at what that looks like and what the implementation... What the... What's the word?
Implications.
Thank you. Implications for that. So, that's one thing that we'll be revisiting. I'm looking, working right now with our attorney to take a look what that will look like and bring that forward to city council. The other thing is with garbage, the city is actually gonna be working with the downtown business to help them understand and address their dumpster management. That seems to be a significant issue, dumpsters overflowing, that kind of thing, and making sure that not only is garbage, is the dumpsters closed, but making sure that they're not overflowing and that they have the appropriate amount of pickups to make sure that that garbage stays inside. Again, I can't reiterate enough how important removing a food source from the rodent population is critical in prevention. Resident involvement. One of the key components to this is your personal responsibility as a resident to addressing some of the, many of the rodent issues. And we're gonna talk a little bit at the next slide about the prevention. It's key to really take a look at your yard and assess, are you contributing to that issue, you know, and also, what does that look like in your neighborhood? And we have, as part of that, using Adam Loomis as our inspector who's taken us on, as his personal mantra of trying to become that expert and being that support system for residents and neighborhoods to understand what is going on. He's gonna... He would be able to come out and assess your yard and offer you some direction on what you can do to clean some things up, as well as if you have a neighborhood group or a neighborhood that wants to join together and take a look at what those issues are. And we're gonna talk about that in the next slide. But again, it's very much is just as important for each resident to take a look at prevention measures as it is for the city. So, some of the key prevention, and it's important, I'm gonna back up for just a second, too, as well as that baiting and poisoning is the last option you want to make. And you... If we don't prevent, then the baiting is almost really not helpful, because they're just keep harboring and they keep getting food, and it just keeps... They just populate so quickly. That prevention is actually the most important step you can take. One of the things is that, you know, once you start seeing those rodents in your yard, is to pay attention, and immediately is a sign for you to take a look at what's going on in your own yard. Landscaping and lawn maintenance is really important. We have updated on our website. We have a new brochure that we've, that we have just made, as well as more information that really talks about what are some landscaping concerns that you might want to be aware of with alternatives. They're really low to the ground, shrubbery and things of that nature. They don't... They want to find... Not only do they want to find food, but they want to find a place to be warm and to be out of the eye of the public. So, anything that they can hide in, especially that low landscaping, can be an issue. But our brochure talks in more detail about what are better options. A huge component is, again, storing your garbage in containers that have a lid. If they can't smell it and they can't see it, they don't want to get in there. But they can chew through rubber. I mean, that's difficult. But if you're keeping them out from other prevention measures, then just covering up in a sealed container is very helpful in keeping them away and out of your yard. A lot of people don't know this, but a huge component is your animal waste. They love animal waste, just as disgusting as the rat is. And so, people need to be very diligent about cleaning up your animal waste that you have in your backyard. Again, this is another thing, too, is when you stack up pieces of wood, or you have piles of brush or anything like that, composting is just a breeding ground. Again, that place for what we call, what we term harborage is very critical in maintaining that. I was telling somebody the other day that we are doing some work on my own house, and we had put up, we had a woodpile temporarily while my husband was cleaning things up. Within a day, my dogs were at that woodpile so quick, because there was animals had already, within 24 hours, had already found a home in that woodpile. That is so, so important is to make sure that you keep all piles off the ground. And you can have those, as long as they're not on the ground. You have to have them lifted. Again, they're looking for a safe haven. Bird feeding and landscaping. So, bird feeding is a very complicated issue, because people love their birds, and we understand that. But we do have, in our brochure, I believe, Kara, correct me if I'm wrong, there are different bird feeders, though, that help prevent the bird feed or the feed coming onto the ground. And that's what you don't want to do, is have that, the bird seed and all of that stuff on your ground, because again, they can... That's what they're looking for is food. So, really taking a look if you're... If you have, if you want a bird feeder, making sure that it keeps it off, away from the ground. The other prevention measure, again, as we had talked about, is that we do have staff on hand to come in and do an assessment and help you understand where some of the areas are and give you suggestions. If you feel that you want that help, we can provide that support for you. We have that as well on our website for your information. So, the prevention, as you can see, has got the longest list, because that's the most critical and important part. Elimination is, one of the things that we talked about is that, again, we talked a little bit about baiting, and sometimes you do have to do that, and we... It's just, you gotta get rid of them somehow. We understand that and respect that. But again, without the preventative measures, the baiting is almost a mute point, if you will, and a moot point. And we have to be careful with that, because if you don't bait correctly, then you can have other animals that die. So, we actually, not too long ago, had an area that didn't bait appropriately, and we lost a bunch of squirrels and birds and things of that nature. So, it's critical for residents who want to bait, and it's completely acceptable. We encourage you to use a reputable pest control company, but you can also buy the stuff at Home Depot or Lowe's, but just make sure you follow the directions and make sure that there's very specific directions on how you bait to avoid having your own animals or your cats or squirrels or bunnies get in, to get into that. So, we do recognize that people, that our residents are really sensitive to the other animals, and that's why you'll notice in all of our information, we talk more about prevention, because that's actually the most critical, believe it or not. But that we do recognize absolutely that baiting will need to take place, but to do it as the most responsible and the most humane way as possible. And a lot of those companies will be able to help you walk through a safer measure of I think, as you can see, this is really an education component. A lot of residents just don't understand how important that it is, that it's a personal choice and a decision to address your yard. It's a part... The city plays a part in it in making sure we're enforcing, but really understanding how important it is. When you talk to a code enforcement officer, they get very passionate about, you know, their frustration and what they're seeing, and a lot of tips. So, we're trying to put as much as we can to help you understand what role and what we need to do to support the rodent control, especially with winter coming up. A couple of tips that we want to talk about really quick is that with winter coming up, they're gonna want to find a warm place to stay. So, making sure that as you clean up your yard and you winterize it, if you will, get all that stuff off the floor, try to put it in or off the ground, try to get in your garage. The less you have in your backyard, the very... Much... There's a much less chance of them being able to, what we call harbor, and that's what's really important. So, just to kind of reiterate what we can do to support you in understanding how you can help with rodent control is on our website, we do have a brochure. All of our code enforcement officers or inspectors, actually, all of our inspectors, including all of our rental inspectors, building inspectors, will have brochures to offer as they're going to, as they see issues, because they know what it looks like. They're gonna provide that information to residents, but it's available online. We also are in the middle of creating one for businesses, too, right Kara? I think, yeah, we are. So, one specifically to businesses, especially in the downtown district. Again, every area has a little bit different. We can do workshops with you if you have a neighborhood group, or you just have a block that you want to work together. We can bring somebody in to have a conversation with you and help you with all of that. And then, we do, again, our inspectors, not only the one that is becoming a specialist, but all of our inspectors have a lot of information and our wealth of knowledge that we want to help you address the rodent population within your neighborhood. So, that is pretty much rodents in a nutshell. I do, this is going to go on our website as well. Adam Loomis is the inspector that I've been talking about. His direct dial is right on there. And I think we have his email address, if not, I'll make sure that that is on there as well. I can't quite see. Yep, but we are absolutely there to help anybody who needs it, who wants assistance, assessments, anything that you need, we're there to help you.
Any questions from council? So, is there questions of council? And then, if there's anyone in the audience that has any questions, I'll give you an opportunity after council has a chance as well, so.
I may not have all the answers heads out, but I...
Right, yeah.
I was wondering if this presentation was gonna be available on our website, too?
Yeah.
She said it was.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Other questions?
You provided a lot of information about outside property, and you did bring up the idea of keeping things in garages. But is our garages also an issue? Or is there... Has there been issues with, you know, rats, you know, coming out or, you know...
I think that...
Housing in people's garages?
In talking to code... Or the inspectors, I keep calling them inspectors, that a lot of it is making sure that all of your holes are filled. If you're building anything new to have a rat wall, if you don't have one and you have a rat problem, to be able to put one in. So, I mean, obviously, a lot of people have older garages, but really double checking where your holes are and making sure everything is plugged is key to that. And if you have more, if you think that your garage is contributing to that, definitely give us a call, and we can come out and do that assessment for you.
I would assume that applies for like under porches and decks?
Yep, absolutely. In fact, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, one of, talking to one of our other inspectors, he had mentioned that actually, when you do a deck, when they do inspections, they actually ask that you not put anything around it on the bottom. You want it open, because again, it keeps them, it's windy, it's cold, and they're always looking for a place to be warm. So, the more open all of that is, the less chance they have that they would want to harbor.
Apparently, I know more than I thought I did.
Any other questions from council?
I guess a couple from me. First, a comment, and that is on the code enforcement. It is so difficult, because everyone has an opinion about code enforcement, but they're either one or the other. It's either too lenient, and that's if it's somebody on your block that you think needs to be cracked down on, or it's too harsh, and that's probably because it was you that got contacted by the city. We rarely strike the exact balance that residents find. So, I know that is a challenge, but I think it is important, and I like, you know, the way you phrase it is good. You know, we've gone from sort of being very kind and educational. We do need to begin to be firmer with residents about what's expected, because as the problem continues, and knowing that that's gonna cause some people to think that we're being too harsh now, and we'll get those reactions. But I think we're just gonna have to gird ourselves for that. So, that's just a comment. A question, a couple of just minor questions. You talked about working with the downtown business owners, because it strikes me that the downtown issues are a little different than the neighborhood issues, because of the restaurants and the kinds of things. I was just struck, you said the city will work with downtown businesses, but are we or should we be involving the great folks at the DDA to help us with that? They're good at communicating with them. They have those relationships. I didn't notice them on your task force either, but it's such a uniquely different problem downtown.
Yeah, we will have, before we do any outreach...
Very, we want to get you involved in rats, okay?
Yeah, no, that, I'm sorry, that was implied. But yeah, we will work with the DDA and education, for sure.
Yeah, great, awesome.
They're on there, yeah.
And then, I guess, and maybe there's not an answer to this, but how do we know if we're succeeding? How do you... How is this measured? Because anecdotally, everybody thinks there's lots of rats always, but that's not always true. Is it measurable? And if so, how do we do that?
Yes. I can't give you the details, because I would need to sit down with Adam, but he is actually, there is a measure that you can take, and he's working through right now, finding out the metrics for that. And believe it or not, and I know this just sounds like I'm trying to skate the issue, but even the CDC says that it becomes what's called a tolerance issue. How tolerable can it be? Because they are never going to go away. But what we can do is measure, and unfortunately, we probably won't see results right away. It'll take about eight months before you can preimpose. So, once Adam and the CED team has that, kind of understood what those metrics will look like, I'll make sure to report back on what we're measuring and how do we, how are we looking at, are we successful? So, we're trying to kind of really wrap up, ramp up right now, so that we can try to educate as much on protecting our properties for the winter, because that's when spring hits. The more that we can get some of those measures controlled now, that hopefully some of that population will die off in the winter. But there is a measurable outcome, and we just have to, we're looking into what that looks like and what that means.
For the chair?
Yeah.
I have a follow-up question, a couple. Can you talk a little bit about apartment complexes who also have dumpsters and how that fits in? Not necessarily a downtown issue or not a single-family homeowner issue, but definitely is impacting neighborhoods.
It would be, obviously, they may not have a dumpster situation, so that would be addressed through enforcement as well in a different manner than the loose garbage that we're talking about. So, that will be on a case-by-case basis. Fortunately, our inspectors are there on a regular basis doing rental inspections, so we actually have been educating our rentals a lot longer than we have our own residents. So, that will be handled appropriately, whether they have a dumpster or loose trash as well.
And I know one issue I've heard from residents, it's also is vacant housing. So, I know that is a specific issue, sort of a subset issue of this taking care of rodents, and I know you and I have talked about privately of addressing our vacant housing, our housing ordinance that deals with vacant housing, but I think this problem with rodent control is related.
Like I said, every neighborhood might have a different reason for, or different contributors, and one of them could be blight. And as part of this, we're also looking at the bigger issues of maybe some of the houses that have been a blighted problem for quite some time that are more than just a rat problem. It could be like a vacant blighted property. I also want to note, one of the things that we have done and we're enforcing right now is that anytime a house gets, or any kind of time a building gets demoed, we require 30 days of abatement, so that makes sure that there are baits set and traps, so that we can make sure that it is rodent-free before the demo comes down. We've actually been having a couple, people comment they're getting concerned about the two school buildings that could be coming down in the next year. But we've actually are readjusting our permit process as it relates to demo to include that rodent control measure as well. So, we're... That, and hopefully, we actually did that with Ferndale House, as they were baited. They did a pre-bait, if you will, and assessment on the rodents before it got demoed.
And my final question is related to the last community education meeting or city education meeting, and there really is real concern about environmentally and humane ways of trapping and killing the rodents, as well as disposal. So, I was wondering, can you talk a little bit about, there's a somewhat, there's a group that's interested in putting up owl houses, and I was wondering how this relates to this four-point, five-point program that you have here?
Again, I think we focus more on the prevention measures as it relates to actually, you know, removing the rats, if you will, or rodents. We would encourage people to call pest control, and maybe other people will find, I think, the owl houses, as well as more humane ways of dealing with that rodent population. There's, we support the owl houses. We recognize that's definitely a component of that. So, it really just depends on how you, as a homeowner, want to manage that process.
Okay.
One other thought that I had. I'm open to you guys coming to us with perhaps some ordinance modification that requires a trash can with a lid. I'm also sensitive to the fact that we have a community with a lot of range of incomes, and that could be a financial hardship for folks. So, I hope that, and I'm guessing that you will, sort of when you put that recommendation together, we might need some sort of an income hardship discount or something, just to make sure that it's not too much of a financial burden on folks.
Okay, well, you just took my comments.
Oh, I'm done.
All right.
All right. Anything else from council? Is there anyone from the public that has a comment or concern about rodents that they would like to share with us as we work through this? All right. Well, thank you, April. That was very helpful and educational, so I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, our next item of business would be, we have a couple of public hearings that we need to conduct this evening, and Justin from our Community and Economic Development Department will conduct those. The first being a special land use application for 1725 Pine Crest Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As the mayor stated, we did recently have a special land use application for the reuse of an existing home, primarily as a resident, but also as an accessory use for the home of Jewish Ferndale. Within the zoning ordinance, obviously, in our one single-family residential district, that use is permitted. However, with any type of accessory... However, with any type of accessory use as a religious community center, requires special land use, which is why we're having the public hearing. And just for clarification purposes, accessory uses for places of worship in our ordinance includes living quarters for the ministry, a place of religious education classes, and things of that nature. So the application is a proposal for primarily use for the applicant and his family to live there primarily, and then accessory would be for small classes and living quarters, as I mentioned. So the application came in earlier this summer. We had a public hearing at the planning commission at the July 20th meeting. The meeting was noticed properly, and residents came out, had some general concerns about parking, building capacity, noise levels, things like that. The applicant clarified a lot of those items, and also is proposing some additions to the site, including a new bike rack. The site is actually pretty unique in that it was previously a dentist office for many years, and has its own surface parking lot on-site. The parking requirements, based in the ordinance for single-family homes and for religious institutions of religious worship, has enough parking on-site for that, but the applicant also secured a parking agreement with the Renaissance Vineyard Church, which is just across Nine Mile there. So, in the end, the planning commission approved the site plan recommended approval of the special land use, and since that time, the planning commission offered up some conditions related to the site plan. Staff's been working with the applicant to have those addressed, and those will be part of the final administrative site plan approval. But other than that, staff's also recommending approval of the special land use permit, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Great, and so before I open it up to the public hearing, I know, I see the good rabbi here, do you want to just sort of briefly, come on up and describe what you're doing there, and then we'll open it up to the public for any comments that they have, and then we'll have council. Good to see you again, sir.
Thank you for having us. Our idea is, we recognize that there is a growing Jewish population in Ferndale whose needs are not being met. We've been working for close to a year and a half now with the Jewish population, starting in December of 2014, and the, working with people in houses and various establishments in the downtown, whenever we needed to do anything, and it became clear very quickly the popularity of our getting-togethers, our groups, that we needed something which would accommodate a larger space, and finding this house, this former dentist office has proved to be the perfect site for all of these various things. Our goal with it, one of the things we wanted to attract, is that this site be, if not the most, but one of the most green facilities in Ferndale. We've come contract with an organization in Ohio that provides solar paneling for churches and schools. We're looking to make the grounds around to be environmentally sound, and to do all types of things to increase the greenness of the property, and that it should be a showcase piece for the city of Ferndale. That's basically our idea.
Excellent, thank you, Rabbi. So at this point, I will open up the public hearing, and is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on this special land use permit? No? All right?
So I have a question.
If you could come up to the microphone, just so that we can all hear you, and the folks at home can hear you as well, that'd be great. And give us your name, if you don't mind?
So my name's John Mazza, and we own a home on Pinecrest, also just across the street. Unfortunately, when the last hearing happened, we were out of the country, so we were unable to participate. I guess I have a couple of questions. You know, what level of traffic is going to be going in and out of that house? It seems like it's already a rather busy area with some of the stores that are just north of that property, and we're concerned about the amount of traffic, you know, the number of people going in and out, and just controlling things a little bit. So I have a question about that.
I think I'll ask Justin to address that, because I know parking and vehicular traffic was a concern at this planning commission, so could you sort of address what was discussed there?
Yeah, definitely. So one of the further, I mean, in discussions with the rabbi, you know, his intent has always been to have small classes, so the planning commission requested having the fire marshal actually, which is a normal process that the fire marshal does, usually later in the building process, but have him go and assess, you know, realistically, by building and fire code, how many people could actually be in this facility. And in his recommendation, 32 would be the maximum. In discussions with the rabbi, that 32 would be on a very minimal large, I mean, that would be the largest, obviously, and that would not be a normal happenstance. But aside from that, it, there would be, it would be, if they went much, if he allowed for much more capacity than that, it would require fire suppression, which the rabbi is no interested in doing either, so.
And did that prompt the discussion with the additional parking across Nine Mile?
The parking was kind of, the additional parking was always kind of part of the discussion, part of the plan.
Thirty-two cars is an awful lot of cars to add to that area.
And there's only 16 spaces on-site, so that's why the shared parking agreement is in place, and then also, there's an expected a lot of amount of bike traffic with the addition of the bike rack, and then people walking as well. The rabbi is installing a new walkway from the sidewalk to, for ADA purposes, to get to the building as well.
So, and then I would have one other question.
No parking at Pinecrest, yeah.
One other question would be, so if this becomes a religious site, then is it excluded from taxes?
Probably so, I believe so. But typically, that is what religious institutions will do.
Okay. Well, I guess I still have some concerns about the whole thing, but it sounds like it's too far down the road to really impact anything.
Well, that's why we're here, for the public hearing, sir, yeah.
So what hours would people be coming and going?
Is that, would the hours addressed at the planning commission, Justin?
Yeah, I believe the final hours were typical, normal evening hours, 10 o'clock being the latest, and that would be for certain events. But also, the, as the rabbi had mentioned, he will be living there, so it's a sort of a situation where he, you know, doesn't want to have his family up, you know, all hours of the night, seven days a week, so it's kind of limited there as well. But the other, with, along with hours, the question that came up was noise levels at the planning commission, and, you know, this facility, just like any other, would be bound to the noise ordinance that we have here in the city.
So who monitors that?
The police department, you know, they take any complaints if there's, if there is, if there is a complaint of, you know, loud noises and things like that, they do have a, you know, meter that reads decibels, and it's, I forget what the actual range is of what's permissible, but it's bound by certain hours and that decimal level.
Is it poss, Justin, this is for my education and perhaps for his and other residents' benefit, but, so a lot of negotiation happened with the planning commission, a lot of restrictions and these sort of things were put into place. Is that a public document that folks can see, so that they know when, not just here, but in any property is out of compliance with their special land use permit, and they can, they know that that would be a logical time to call the police or the city?
The noise ordinance is available on the city's website, for sure.
Of course, I mean, I'm talking about the particular restrictions and conditions that he has agreed to.
Yes.
Are those available so that residents understand what they are and know when they may be violated?
Yes, so in this, as far as, even at this meeting, but after the planning commission meeting, minutes are recorded and approved at the following meeting, so all the minutes, all the conditions that were approved will be, would be, are always posted on the city's website the following month, once the planning commission approves those minutes. But before the meeting, any conditions that are included in the packet prior to the meeting, those are, everything that was discussed at the meeting, prior to the meeting, was, is on the city's website as well. So always at FerndaleMINE.gov, agendas and minutes is the button at the bottom of the page, and anyone can see what's on the upcoming agenda and anything that was sent to the planning commission in advance.
So, if so, yeah, come on up.
I guess 32 people sounds incredibly excessive, 32 people. A dentist's office would be, I don't think he works on 32 people. That is a concern of mine, because that area isn't that big. I couldn't imagine 32, as, you know, is there a discussion point of limiting that to a much smaller number than 32? Because if you park across to a different parking lot, I don't think that's an appropriate thing for the space that's allotted. Thirty-two, the building that we're familiar with, I can't believe the fire marshal would approve 32 people being in there as a safety issue.
Well, he inspected the property, and that's, I don't know how he comes up with his-
There would be, I mean, yeah, there would be, as part of the process, I mean, if this was just a cursory review walkthrough, once the building plan, once, if this plan was approved, building plans would be submitted, and that's when he would truly go out and make a final assessment. But, you know, as part of this special land use process, you know, that's an option to limit capacity and things like that, from this, or from this, from council's perspective. But, yeah, I mean, his review of the property, 32, you know, was based on the current configuration, and that configuration could be smaller as well, based on some of the improvements that the rabbi had spoke about, so 32 would be the max.
So I'm, just so I understand your concern, is your concern about having actually 32 people in the facility, or the parking and other stuff?
I think the noise, the noise and the parking associated with it is, there's going to be a lot of that.
There'll be a lot of traffic. 32 people, I think is a lot. It is a residential area. Based on the previous business, a dentist wouldn't have that quantity, and so it would never have been our expectation when we purchased the house, that we would have that type of traffic right there. I know, understand we're really close to Nine Mile, and there is quite a bit, but that is also, believe it or not, it's just far enough away that that isn't, and you have families there. And so I guess with the traffic and the hours of operation that could be potential for a religious site, I think I read, actually, originally it was 24/7.
The rabbi can speak on specific 24/7, but, I mean, in all previous conversations, it had been that the only 24/7 piece would be that he and his wife would be living there, because that's their primary residence, that's the primary use.
If I may?
Yes?
Now, I'm pretty sure that at that, that particular address, there's already been events hosted there, so was that an issue for anyone? Because there have been events there already.
Well, we own the house, and my nephew and his small child and his wife live in the house, and that's part of our concern, is they've got children, and so we don't actually live in the house, but we're concerned about what's coming, and also what it's going to do to property values in the area.
Okay.
Sorry, I guess we're going to agree to disagree with the property values with that type of traffic in a residential area, and the concern of that, and the safety habit of it, even though there is discussion that it is something that's limited to hours, a religious organization, I believe, does have full access 24/7.
So why would there already be events happening if this hasn't been approved?
Well, this was, there were events, and I'm sure the rabbi can speak to it, but I'm pretty sure that there was get-togethers. I mean, they're going to be living there, so they were-
Well, that's fine, but-
And it might have been easily 30 people at that time. It's just, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, I understand the parking concerns, but with stating that there can be, if I'm not mistaken, it's a pretty long driveway, so I'm thinking, how many cars did you say could fit in that driveway?
Sixteen.
And then with the collaboration with Renaissance Vineyard, there's plenty of parking there, and just-
I know, but you're taking another property to subsidize allowing even more people to be at that facility, and I would beg to differ that 16 could fit normally. There may be 16 that you could fit in there, but 16 normally, I don't know if I necessarily agree. I haven't measured things out, or I'm not going to trespass on somebody's property. But everyone in residence have parties, but nobody has parties or classes every day, or even multiple times a week. You know, a neighbor having a party with, you know, over 32 people in the backyard, you know, for a birthday celebration is probably pretty normal in a residential, but not something that you continuously have and are burdened with. Right across the street, we bought it as an investment property, and I feel that this is something that's a little bit of a disappointment for us, because we didn't expect something like that with that type of traffic.
Thank you.
And I think the other conversation that came up at the planning commission is that if this property was not one parcel away from West Nine Mile, maybe it wouldn't, wouldn't normally be considered for this use. That's why we have special land use as part of the process for our one districts and for institutions of religious worship. But it sort of acts as a transition to the rest of the neighborhood. If it were further down the block, I don't think this would be permissible.
Because it's not desirable.
And I think if it didn't already have a surface parking lot there, then that would also be another reason, you know, that it wouldn't be considered if it were further down the block. But I think that the rabbi, in his application, he mentioned it as well, but his, he has a great desire to be part of the community and be a real, really good neighbor, so I think, you know, the concerns about noise and hours and things like that are definitely something to consider, but I think that he has a very strong interest in being a good neighbor and being a part of the community. So if there were, you know, instances of noise or things like that, that he were cited or anything like that, he'd quickly remedy those issues as well.
To the chair, I have a couple of questions.
This is still the public hearing, so we're going to allow the public to speak now, and then we will have opportunity. So come on up, ma'am, and give us your name, and any questions or concerns that you have.
I don't have any concerns. I'm Helen Lombardo, I live across the street from the facility, and my conversation is there's already four churches in the area, there's not a real issue. There's, if you want to complain about noise and all that other stuff, the people going up and down Pinecrest with radios blaring and all hours of the night, and the people going through the Taco Bell, that could be a real issue. This, I don't think is going to be an issue at all. I think that you've got people going to church, they are going to be less likely to disrupt a neighborhood, and I would like to explore what's going on.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address council on this special land use? All right, Rabbi?
There was a discussion, since the front lawn is massive, it's 60 feet deep by about 50 feet wide, of turning the space into a meditative garden, taking out the grass, and my wife and I are not into grass, we're into like no-mo, having benches, having a place of solitude where people can sit comfortably. And it was 8:00 at night when we were standing on the front lawn, and the noise generated from the traffic coming across Nine Mile and Pinecrest totally and completely ruled out any type of, an idea of having a meditative garden, because all you'd be meditating about is how loud the traffic was. So as far as the noise that's going to be generated by the property, and the goings of ins and outs, the number 32 is going to be just on very rare occasions. We're looking at a space which is going to have eight, 10 people at any given time, which is very much equal to what was there. The dentist put in a parking lot which holds 18 spaces, understanding that he must have needed those 18 spaces, or he would not have put them in. I don't foresee or envision the parking lot being full on a regular basis, and the egress and access tube coming out onto the, onto Pinecrest, not creating any sort of traffic jam, impeding with traffic flow. And as Mr. Lyons pointed out, we're coming to augment the neighborhood, and I do sincerely believe that the presence of Jewish Ferndale will have a major positive effect on the properties, as I know that since I bought this house in May, even before we started even thinking, that many, many Jewish families have now purchased houses in Ferndale and are looking for- are looking forward to us being there.
All right. Seeing no other people from the public, I will close the public hearing portion and I will now open it up to council for comments and questions.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I couldn't ascertain from the write-up is how many square feet are, is this house?
It's thirty-seven hundred total.
Thirty-seven hundred.
Thirty-seven hundred square foot. And can, maybe this is a question for Dan Christ, our lawyer, but in the first paragraph of the request for council action, it says accessory uses and places of worship in the city ordinance includes rectories, living quarters, and ministry, religious education classes, daycare and playgrounds, religious office space and other similar activities. If we approve this tonight, are we also allowing this places of worship to also put in a daycare or a playground down the road? If that is something they wanted to do after we approve this, is that something that they could put in?
Through the chair, no, but for purposes of clarity, that could be in council, in any type of motion that you were to entertain, that it is, as the presentation is set forth, it's, the principal use remains residential, it is an accessory use for an institution of, of, of public worship purposes. And to the extent that there is other uses, while there are certain relupa issues that would need to be considered by council, which, which go to federal issues regarding institutions of religious worship, the clarity in the motion limiting it to the institution of religious worship sets forth the, the city's position on that issue. Should there be some future speculative additional use that the rabbi were to contemplate, at least the, the city would be on record as it relates to the scope that it intended for, for the accessory use.
Dan, you're usually very clear, but you lost me.
Yeah, I, I...
Can he open a daycare?
Through the chair, but the problem associated with that issue is if he, if, if one were to argue that the daycare was for children of his members while they were having some type of class, there would be an argument associated that under federal law that he, that it, that the city should not inhibit that use under relupa. So, it would be speculative for me to say that it's impossible. What I try to suggest is that the, should council wish to approve the special land use, it could provide additional clarity as it relates to the scope of the accessory use it envisions, which is an institution of religious worship. The applicant, that as it relates to his proposed uses, I mean, it identifies a couple of the uses that he proposes, an area for Jewish Ferndale, but it, it doesn't go into a laundry list of what those uses might consist of.
Right. And what's the line between a backyard play area for a residential and a playground for a business that would qualify as a daycare? Is that a jungle gym of some sort of size? I mean, like, that, I don't know what the difference would be if it's a residential use as a place of worship. It gets some sticky, it's sticky there, right? So, and answering, asking my question and your answer, I have more questions, which provide no clarity.
Could, maybe, could I ask the rabbi a question? I can imagine, and I guess my assumption was, if you're doing a class and you have ten people and some of them bring a couple of kids, you might have another place where the kids could be facilitated, but that your general idea wasn't to make it a daycare center for Jewish families that would be on a regular basis. So, would you be, would you have an objection to us clarifying that so that it couldn't become a, a full-blown daycare center, which it does seem to imply in this language that that would be possible?
A drop-off pickup daycare center.
A drop-off pickup daycare center operated as such versus a place where, you could, you could, you could...
I was instructed by Derek Delacorte when we talked about what the uses could be. And one of the things I asked about was a daycare and he instructed me that to do that it would have to go out from being special usage of residence and would have to be zoned then either multi-use or commercial. It would involve a tremendously long and arduous process and would require tremendous upgrades to the facility which are beyond our budget.
And for good reason. And so, Justin, would that be your expectation as well, that if, that our concern that we don't want this to turn into a drop-in daycare center is addressed because it wouldn't be permissible under this use?
Correct. And I, I think that if, if there was a drop-off daycare proposed, the planning commission would have wanted to consider that as part of their decision, so...
If I could, through the chair, I mean, is the rabbi suggesting or agreeing to your question that he, he's not planning on doing a drop-off?
I think that's what I heard him say, yes.
Because zoning prohibits it.
Because zoning prohibits that.
There was some initial discussions on possibilities for the site and one of the, a question came up about rezoning.
Right.
We directed the applicant to not, to not pursue rezoning because it would not be, it just really doesn't make sense for that site.
All right. And a follow-up question. We are redoing the master land use plan and the zoning designations are slightly changing. Would that be impacted of future zoning?
This, the, the change, proposed changes to the zoning district for R1 would not, wouldn't, this would not come up with that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Other questions? Are you finished, councilwoman?
Yes. One more question. What was the, was this just purely residential before the dentist office went in or was there a business used prior to this?
No one has ever lived in that facility. In the last thirty-five years, it's been strictly a dentist's office.
That was, that was my, under my understanding as well in city's files.
Swarishon from nineteen fifty's upstairs, in pristine condition.
Other questions or comments of council?
Just sort of a, a general comment. I, I hear the concerns of the residents who came up for a public comment. And I think always increased traffic is a concern of almost every resident who is having a different type of use coming to a building near their home. But this is right next to our commercial business district with an existing parking lot that was designed for a business with a historical use of that. So, I think that's what the planning commission took into consideration. And I don't know a lot of rebunkish church revelers. And I think the issue of capacity, I think, still needs to be confirmed. And you said that that would happen if and when, if council approved this tonight, right? So the thirty-two number is not set in stone.
In discussions with the fire marshal, there were some options talked about, about adding some other, you know, like a bench seating and things like that, that would take away from some of the seating space in the area. So that would decrease the occupancy as well. So through the building plan process or in building permit submittal, that would all be solidified then. It could, I mean, capacity, the number of capacity could be a condition that council includes in, in the motion.
Okay. And then just one follow-up question that I saw in the planning commission notes from Commissioner Ask, with the thirty-two cap maximum capacity from what the rabbi said would be minimally hit over, you know, every week, right? That's not something that would be regular occurrence. I think there was a question about special events of wedding natures and, and parties. Would that be allowed as well?
I think in discussions with the rabbi, it would be very challenging to have an actual wedding there that's larger than the numbers that we've talked about. The inside of this, the facility just wouldn't support it.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have at this time.
Right.
I have a question for the rabbi. Would you humor me in sharing, once everything's up and running and going, would you share with me what a typical week at the facility would be like?
What we envision is classes on a regular basis.
What's, what's, like, are you going to have from eight to nine, nine to ten, you know, like twelve classes a day?
We probably have, we probably have like, maybe three or four classes a day, like a before work going to class, possibly lunch and learn if it was, if the people in the area were available for such a thing, so a couple of nighttime classes. The garage is going to be used as an art studio. My wife has turned our garage in Oak Park, which is a single car structure, where she teaches small classes, usually five or six, where this is a two-car garage, it's even bigger than a two-car garage. So classes would probably still be five or six because it's a very manageable number for her. So, and then we'd probably have people over at our house as welcome as guests for dinners and things like that, once or twice a week.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions, comments?
Or a motion would be here.
Were you going to make the motion?
I was, are you about to say something first?
I was going to make the motion, but if you want to make the motion, you're going to...
It doesn't matter.
Okay. I move to approve the special land use request for seventeen twenty-five Pine Crest, Sidwell number twenty-four dash twenty-five dash thirty-three dash two oh one dash zero three two, to permit accessory uses associated with an institution of religious worship with the following findings and conditions as stated in the packet.
Is your support?
Support.
All right. Final comments or discussion?
I just wanted to say that the final condition is the maximum occupancy of the building to be determined by the fire and building department.
Right.
So, that has to be done.
And that truly, and through the chair, that truly applies for, for any development that comes through, that's just in standard protocol.
All right.
I, I, I would just like to comment that, I, I do understand the concern of, of noise and, and activity. As I get older, I notice that I'm less tolerant of noise earlier in the evening and, you know, I like my quiet and as people move into my neighborhood, I have the conversation with them that we are a very quiet neighborhood and we like to keep it that way. But I, I will be honest, if, if the rabbi were to move in, you know, next door to me or across the street from me, I wouldn't have an issue. I don't think that the activity that is going to be happening at that location is going to inhibit the quality of life in the neighborhood.
Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you.
Looking for Dan.
Oh, yeah, Dan is not with us. Our planning commission member is not with us this evening, but I think the notes captured pretty well what happened at that meeting. So, yes, rabbi, the special land use is adopted. Thank you, sir. Justin, you have the next one as well, right?
Yes.
A public hearing on two one five zero zero Woodward Avenue for a special land use application as well.
Yes, as the mayor stated, Suburban Collection is the applicant in this instance for special land use approval. The applicant also operates other auto facilities as part of the suburban four complex. For clarity purposes, the existing pre-owned auto facility is about sixteen hundred square feet at twenty-one five hundred Woodward Ave. Proposed plans are to build a new facility, it's about forty-seven hundred square feet within the existing site. And that was a big question that came up at the planning commission is, you know, is this dealership or pre-owned auto facility expanding into my neighborhood? So they're staying within that existing site. And they're also providing improvements to the building, the design and overall facility, but also landscaping, screening and other improvements there as well. As I mentioned, vehicle dealerships, our special land use in the C2 general commercial district. And at the public hearing, the planning, at the planning commission meeting July twentieth, a public hearing was held, the residents nearby the facility did have some questions about landscaping improvements, some lighting on the site, noise, and then, as I mentioned, just the opportu, the chance that the facility would expand into the residential neighborhood. The applicant and planning commission both, I think assured them that expansion was not part of the applicant's current proposal. And, and in previous discussions, expanding commercial property near the facility and in, and really in general, expanding commercial property into a residential district is not in line with the two thousand eight master plan, nor is it in line with the proposed twenty-sixteen master plan. So with that, planning commission approved the site plan with some conditions, which the applicant has been working with staff on. They provided a letter of what those condition, improvements to the site would be. And so those would be part of the administrative approval with staff. Some of those changes were additional landscaping and redesigning the display area along Woodward to make it a little more friendly to people driving by and some stormwater management. So, a lot of improvements being made to the site. As I mentioned, planning commission recommended city council approval, staff would recommend that as well based on the application and then the conditions that will be met through that final site plan as well.
All right. And so we'll do a, we'll do a public hearing. Before I do that, I do have sort of a simple clarification question. It was a dealership, it's going to continue to be a dealership.
Correct.
Why did it require a special land use?
Because, essentially just because it is a brand-new building on-site in that district.
So it's the same special use, but it's a new building, so it triggers another request for another.
Yes, it triggers a special land use.
So even though it's currently being used in that, has that special land use?
Right. If they were just, if they were using the same building and, and providing, you know, changes to the parking and landscaping, this wouldn't be the case.
Okay. So with that, I will open it up for the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on this special land use permit? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and now we'll open it up to council for questions and comments.
My question, you did touch on the subject, but I don't think I got the full answer. Lighting, do we have a specific, I know I'm going to get the term wrong, candle power?
Foot candles.
Yes. Of what is allowed and shading and all that? Because when Camborn, when the, when the facility went into Camborn, you could do surgery in their parking lot, it was so freaking bright.
Correct. And that, and, yes, so our exterior lighting ordinance has some specific foot candle measurement requirements. One of those being that only a cert, I think it's point four foot candles cannot, if you were standing in the alley next to the facility and had a light meter and did the reading, it could not be higher than that.
Okay.
In the instance of the shops at Camborn, the lighting that was installed was brighter than expected.
Like twenty?
So, so they were, we did a light meter reading there and had to, and they were required to change those lights out as well. But, but, yeah, yes. So the, part of the discussion on, of the site plan that was presented, the lighting was too bright and so that was a condition. Since then, the applicant's remedied that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Justin, my question was around the, what, this stormwater management. What was the discussion around that and, and how is, how is the, the needs there assessed?
Sure. As part of every site plan approval, you're required to assess stormwater management. New facilities that are being built have a stricter standard. I believe it's a ten-year storm is the requirement that you have to cover for. Our engineer, engineering consultants review that. And so that plan was going to be submitted separately. A lot of times, that's just submitted as part of the building plan process.
So it hasn't been submitted yet?
It has not been submitted yet.
Okay.
But it would be required to meet all of that.
Required and subject to that, okay.
Absolutely.
Obviously, we had some flooding in that area particularly, and I know there was at least, anecdotally, people that thought that there was more waste, stormwater generated from that property, you know?
Yeah. And part of that conversation also included that, you know, maybe there could be some more land... could be some more landscaping added to the property to, to limit some of that, um, stormwater runoff, and so, um, that, as part of the revision that was submitted, um, the applicants proposing doing some permeable pavers, um, with grass out front under where the, the cars would, would sit, um, so we thought that was a, you know, a good, um, solution that could, could help contribute and also look nice.
Other questions or comments?
I'm curious, 'cause we've had a lot of conversation about, uh, soil in that area, particularly on Hilton, um, so I'm surprised that this property isn't the same as, you know, hard clay like we have on, um, on Hilton. So it's a different, different soil type that can allow for permeable pavers?
Uh, I mean, that's what we would have to explore. That would be part of that stormwater.
Okay, so that hasn't been determined?
Right. Right. It is proposed, um, at, to use those permeable, permeable pavers if the site will allow for it. Um, aside from that, there were more landscaping bushes and things like that that also helped, um, that were added.
Okay. But they actually, the building is twice as big, almost twice as big as the previous building, so you're actually taking away from just dead parking, well, you really don't take away from non-permeable space, though, it's building or parking lot, what's the difference? So, okay, never mind. I talked it through myself.
Other comments or questions?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'm really excited that, uh, this is coming to us because this is a big improvement over what is currently there, and I appreciate the investment on the, on the property, and it pretty much falls in line with every other, um, dealership on Woodward on the south end, which seems to be, you guys are in competition of one another, so you're upgrading. Um, so, my, my questions, um, about lighting have, I think the planning commission has adequately addressed that. I know they're pretty persistent in making sure that lighting doesn't, um, impact residents as well as sound. Um, the one question I really have is sort of, um, in the LSL analysis, um, item, specific use requirements, C-two, and it talks about vehicle repair within the new building, and it says that, um, the type of repair is still under determined if they are minor or major, and if it's, the planning commission determines it as major, they might require the operation be conducted at a remote location, which would indicate that the size of the building wouldn't need to be its size if that operation is located elsewhere, so can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
Um, particular issue for the site?
Sure, and, uh, if, uh, the applicant Stanley Takach from interior design can help out as well.
Yeah.
But, it was talked about at the planning commission, um, the, in all the discussions, the repair was deemed minor.
And what's the difference between minor and major car repair?
Um, I, I believe that-
Bodywork?
It's more, more cosmetic.
Okay.
Um, they, they're not gonna be doing major, you know, radiator repairs and things like that. Suburban does have other facilities in the area that can service that.
They're not gonna take out the engines and, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So, it's council's pleasure.
Um, I move that city council approve the special land use request for, uh, twenty-one five hundred Woodward Avenue, Sidwell number twenty-four dash twenty-five dash thirty-four dash four three zero dash zero one, to permit redevelopment of an existing pre-owned vehicle sales facility with the following findings and conditions as listed.
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana, supported by Polika. Other comments or questions?
Um, just that all the residents were notified.
Yes, for both the planning commission meeting and this notified, um, through our box here outside, um, for anyone who stops in city hall, on the city's website, um, is listed there, and then also by mail, and then in the Daily Tribune.
Um, and the alleyway will still be, um, accessible to vehicle-
Correct. That was one of the, that was one of the fire and, um, police concerns, yes.
Okay. Other than that, I'm really excited. I think the, the pedestrian walkway on the frontage of the property is definitely an improvement, um, and I think the entryway on Jewel Street, um, is definitely gonna be beautified with the new landscaping, um, which will be a nice entryway into the neighborhood.
I concur with those comments. Excited about it.
I as well, and, and I, you know, I appreciate that Suburban has been a good neighbor to now, they've made some good improvements there and, uh, have, take care of their property, and so we expect nothing more than, or less than that in the future, so we appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Barb, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes.
Thank you, that item is adopted.
Thank you. I would just like to make a pass comment before I leave.
Please do, sir.
Concerning your previous program on your little furry friends.
Oh.
One of the problems we had when we started this two years ago, this building being of such age, um, the masonry is pretty disintegrated, and they have been living under the building. There, we've already done the abatement problem, but it got to the point where the salesmen were naming them as they ran in and out underneath the building. Now, the second condition of this was the comment of they're always looking for heat. Well, a porter would deliver a car from the site into the service bays and back. The technician may not be ready to work he be doing, but he'd come back, open the hood, and there'd be three or four little furry friends sitting on the engines keeping warm. We have since then done the abatement problem, and hopefully, they won't have to use any more CO2 canisters.
Wow.
So, this will dress it up, I'm sure. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, the next item of business is called the audience. I apologize to any of those of you who are here that want to address council, it took an hour and a half to get here, uh, but this is your opportunity to address council on any item, uh, that, that is not on the agenda, 'cause you can speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda, but is there anyone, uh, that would like to address city council this evening? Come on up, give us your name and address, and three minutes to speak on any issue that you like. All right. I go, seeing no one for, called the audience, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are agenda items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the special events permit for the October, Octobier and Barbecue Festival to be held on October fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth of this year, as detailed in the council action summary, to reflect the consensus of the Special Events Committee contingent upon the listed conditions submitted by the Director of Special Events. Item B is the approval of the EPA Oakland County Brownfield Grant Agreement. Item C is the approval of the twenty-sixteen CN and America in Bloom Grant Agreement. Item D is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to review of the Council Finance Committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move that we accept the consent agenda, agenda as presented.
Support.
All right. Moved by Leaks May and supported by Polika. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right. Barb, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Polika?
Yes.
Piana? Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to our only regular agenda item is item A, the consideration of a twenty-sixteen signal moderniz-, modernization program, and who is, that's gonna be you? All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Um, up for your approval and consideration tonight, uh, is the twenty-sixteen signal modern, modernization program. Um, this project, uh, did go through the budget process and was funded, uh, for traffic signal upgrades. Um, it was also included as part of the city's CIP process. Um, the project consists of two intersections that will be getting upgrades, uh, the first one would be the Nine Mile and Allen intersection, and the second one will be the Nine Mile and Pinecrest intersection. Uh, the Nine Mile and Allen, or Nine Mile and Pinecrest intersection will also, uh, have the first, um, audible pedestrian crossing signals in, within the city of Ferndale, so I'm more than willing to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Questions of council?
Just to clarify, there's already armed masks there at Pinecrest and Nine Mile?
At Nine Mile and Pinecrest, it is not currently masked arms.
Right.
It is a box, it's a span signal.
Questions, comments, or a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the low bid of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents of Dan's excavating to perform the two thousand sixteen signal modern, modernization program. The expense would be charged to Road Parks Bond, capital account number three five zero dash zero 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 dash seven 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 point seven zero zero.
I don't know, but, is there support?
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana, supported by Leaks May. Further discussion or comments? Barb, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, that moves, leaves us to call to council. Uh, I see the police chief is here with us this evening. Anything for the good of the community, sir?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor. We, uh, to live the dream, Cruz, so we're all set for it.
All right. How about the fire chief, Chief Sullivan? Anything for the good of the community from the fire department?
Stayed here, Your Honor.
Stayed there, all right. Uh, Justin slash Jordan, community economic development, anything else for the good of the community?
Sure, just a quick, just-
Come on, come on up to it, because folks at home can't hear you without the mic. Yep. Well, when they say no, that's all right, but, sorry.
Uh, just very quickly to put on your radar, that the, uh, master land use plan update is moving forward as scheduled, uh, we're looking to have that in front of you for potential adoption, uh, in your late October meeting, uh, not before several rounds of input with the planning commission, working groups, and of course yourselves, uh, being brought in there, but, uh, lengthy document we got from Hamilton Anderson, this is staff review right now, just to put it on your radar.
Good. Great, thanks. Uh, Jenny, anything from HR this evening? See how she comes up here, Jordan? Gotta tease the new guy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update, uh, regarding our salary survey. Um, we are very excited, we got that data back, um, late last week. Um, we're having some initial reviews and some, um, uh, conversations about that. We hope to have a presentation to council, um, by the latest, the second, uh, meeting in September.
Excellent. Very excited to finally see that. Thank you. Um, I see Michael Larry in the audience. Do you wanna come up and say anything about, uh, Dream Cruise or anything else in regards to special events? Then I actually have a question for you as well.
We survived. Only a couple times it rained and, uh, you know, people ran, then people came back. Um, I think that, uh, overall, I think this was, uh, uh, you know, a challenge every year, 'cause Mother Nature is always in charge, but we always survive. And, uh, I just am very grateful and thankful for the wonderful volunteers that we have to help make this happen, because without them, it wou-, it wouldn't be what it is. And of course, with the fire department, the police department, and our DPW, we're awesome. We really are. We're a great city.
And I would say you, you did more than survive. You really, it was a smashing success, uh, despite what Mother Nature threw at you. Uh, great job, very well organized, um, heard lots of compliments, uh, to you and your staff and your volunteers, so great job.
Thank you.
Um, I do have a question. So last year, we had a vendor who was selling Confederate merchandise.
Mm-hmm.
And we addressed him, and he declined to remove that merchandise. Um, I believe, and I'm looking at the city manager, but that's probably a First Amendment, uh, issue, and they probably have a right to do that. Uh, this year, we had a vendor that was selling some Confederate merchandise that caused some people, uh, uh, to get quite angry. The police were called over because they felt like they were threatened. Um, I stepped in just 'cause I happened to be near there, and I explained to them that it, why I, we probably couldn't force them to take that merchandise down, uh, that that merchandise was offensive in a community like Ferndale, and if they wanted to be good neighbors and, and vendors in the community, that they probably should. Uh, a couple of things. Number one, it was the same vendor from last year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and number two, they did take it down that evening. Uh, by the next day, it was back up. Do you know the vendor I'm referring to?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Um, I prefer not to invite them back to Ferndale again.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if that's your perception, if that's, if that is a violation of any sort of their First Amendment rights, uh, but my opinion is, twice they've been asked not to insult the community by displaying and, and selling that merchandise, and twice they, uh, decided not to follow that suggestion, and what recourse do we have in, in using that or any other excuse, uh, not to invite them to be vendors next year? Would you agree with that? Do you, uh, do you understand who I'm talking about?
Through, through the chair, I, I think that might be an issue where, uh, some additional research and a, and a memo to council, uh, on possible options-
Okay.
Going forward, uh, and the legal issues associated with that, uh, could be provided in a couple of weeks.
So, that, maybe that's more of a question to Dan, yeah.
I might be premature in saying this, but there are gonna be some changes for next year, so you, that might not even be a-
So it might be a moot point.
Exactly.
Talk to Dan, okay? Just talk about that.
Okay.
I, I just was-
But I totally agree with you.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. But I don't want it, that in any way to reflect on the outstanding work that you, the volunteers, the staff did, it was really well organized.
Thank you.
Great job. Great job. Okay. Uh, we'll start over, since we had the chief already. How about from the finance department, anything this evening? No? Joe, anything from the, no? Kara, anything from community engagement? All right. Anything else from, you're back? All right. Happy to have you back.
I just wanted to give a couple quick, uh, updates on the road projects that we have going on around town.
Yeah.
Hilton Road from Eight Mile to Nine Mile, uh, they're actually progressing and are a little bit ahead of schedule. Uh, they're currently in the process of doing some of the landscape restoration, uh, they'll be milling out, um, you know, the existing asphalt and prepping, so, uh, they're moving along quite nicely, uh, traffic, everybody's, you know, with that staging, everybody's in the loop on, uh, the traffic control, so everything's been going good there. Um, and then, uh, with the twenty-sixteen, uh, paving program, uh, they're moving along. Uh, actually, by middle to end of this week, they're anticipating having Area One done, um, with the exception of some landscape restoration where they had to remove and replace curb, as well as any punch list items, so, uh, again, if anybody has any questions or concerns throughout the process, feel free to call the DPW at two four eight five four six two five one four.
I drive down the first block of Leroy off of Woodward every day to get to my block, and, uh, it is a whole nother experience. The beautiful job that they did, it is as smooth as you can imagine, and, uh, it, so that one went great. Everything I've noticed and observed seems to be on schedule and going well. I haven't, there's a lot of-
Yes, we, we ran into a couple of, I guess, unknown conditions that weren't shown in the pavement course. It slowed it down, we had to do a little additional work.
Okay.
Uh, but that did slow it down a little bit, but they're progressing pretty, pretty nicely, so.
Anybody have comments or questions for?
Uh, the Hilton project, I know that it was not part of the plan, but did you happen to find any trees laying around the DPW yard that you could plant on Hilton? to find any trees laying around the DPW yard that you could plant on Hilton?
I did not, but I can definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Barb, anything from the clerk's office this evening?
This is early, but October eleventh is the last day to register to vote for November. Okay, so you can get them online, I'll stop by City Hall and you can pick up an application.
When, when can you request to be a absentee, to get an absentee ballot?
Yeah.
Anytime?
We're getting them seventy-five days ahead of time.
Okay.
So you can do that now if you need an absentee ballot. Excellent. April, anything from the city, else from the city?
I do, I have an awesome announcement. While we were in our meeting, we have a new addition to our Ferndale family. Jill has delivered Clara James Manchik, so her third little girl, and everything went very well, so we are happy to have that addition back to our family.
That is excellent. Jill is our recreation director, for those of you who don't know, and she was in labor during this meeting, and she has given birth. That is great news. Great news. I don't know if you can top that, but anything else?
No, I have to say all that.
Awesome. Thank you. Dan, anything?
Just one item, the property that the city authorized to sell on Hilton Road, that closing is scheduled for this Wednesday, so there should be money on Thursday back to the city.
Good. Thank you. Councilwoman Leaks May? Nothing today? All right. Councilman Polika?
I have nothing this week.
All right. And Mayor Portam, Piana?
Yeah, just a reminder that the Dales Neighborhood Annual Picnic is this Saturday from one to four at Oppenheim Park. It's potluck, but lots of activities for kids and a great way to get to know your neighbors, so I encourage you to come out. If it's raining, there is a rain date, it's September tenth, and usually, rain dates are posted on the Dales Neighborhood Group Facebook page, so hopefully, it won't rain. And then, second, I just wanted to say thank you to Captain Palazolo and Officer Amanda Zamanowski for scheduling a police ride-along with me. I did that last Saturday, or two Saturdays ago, and basically, it's spending four hours in the car, and they always say it gets pretty busy on Saturday nights from eight to midnight, and then I get in the car and nothing happens. I'm not kidding, something happened, but definitely a great experience, and it helps me understand what our police department needs going forward in terms of equipment purchasing and whatnot. Encourage you to do it if you haven't done it.
Watch me do it, and it has, it'd be a really exciting night that probably terrifies me.
You're in safe hands.
I have not done it yet.